Time to start our public hearing for December the 11th, 2018. Roll call, please.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Yeah.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams.
We have no public here, so we're gonna go right into our regular meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Yeah.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Councilman Mike Williams.
Janice, would you leave us in private?
Oh, heaven and father, once again, we've gathered here today to do the business of the city of Hammond. We pray, oh, heaven and father, that we are attentive to the needs of all the citizens of this great city. We pray that we are fair and just in all our dealings, that everything is done right and in order. We pray, oh, heaven and father, that we do everything that is in our power to improve the lives of each and every citizen here in the great city of Hammond. We pray for the city of Hammond, we pray for the state of Louisiana, and we pray for the United States of America. These are all blessings we ask in the name of your precious son, Jesus. To God be the glory.
Amen.
Sure, all retired military, we're in a proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your beloved and faithful citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, I just, I know congratulated all the other folks who have won, but my councilwoman is here and I wanted to congratulate Ms. Carly White Gonzalez and Ms. Janice. I appreciate serving with you.
Appreciate serving.
Yes, ma'am. That's all I have, sir.
And, Mr. President, just also want to congratulate Devon Wells, who'll be also representing the council. So we'll have a full, a new council, another in January. And so I just wanted to, when I talked with Councilman Hood as well, wanted to extend an invitation to the new council members coming on board. If you guys would like to, you know, prior to getting, you know, becoming officially sworn in, if you'd like to meet and just go over some things that I think that we can probably give you advice or at least benefits on from a council perspective. I know you guys were meeting with the administration, but there are things that I think could be very beneficial for you to know going into, into your term that, you know, can help you navigate through some of the things that, you know, that was tougher for us to learn. So, hey, if you guys would like to do that, just let us know, and we'd be more happy to set that up and do that for you, okay?
Thank you.
Ma'am.
As you said, once again, congratulations to everyone kept included, and look forward to working with you. And we'll be getting together, as Lamar said, Friday, to go over some things. As that may be overwhelming to some extent, we'll be here to meet with you at any point in time you'd like to meet after that, for as long as you would like to meet about whatever subjects you would like to talk about throughout our term together. So look forward to working with all of you. Also, Christmas parade was a success. Our particular float, where we had Billy Nungesser as the grand marshal, we had a good time. Our particular float for the after-school program, Aaron Pierce Aviation supported our children this year. Usually I did it, and this year he asked me if he could help, and I said, sure. So he supplied all the throws for my particular float for all the children at the after-school program that were on it. So I know that meant a lot to them, it's fun to always throw. So we thank him, and we also thank Chad Domain in Cypress Point for sponsoring the parade itself. And also remember that the train will be running for grandkids and children and adults who want to ride it into Mary Park. Fridays is six to nine, it's free, Saturdays and Sundays five to nine, so please enjoy that, and Merry Christmas to everyone.
Are they in the business, like to be recognized? No. If not, prove them, minutes.
Second.
Councilman Johnny Blunt. Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Resolution none, hold business none, new business, number one.
Number one, a resolution to request change currently approved alcohol, high-low package to alcohol, high-low on-premise for Best Stop 34.
Punjabi.
Punjabi.
Daba.
Daba, located at 2201 Southwest Railroad Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana 70403. The owner is Janu LLC Jenny Wilson.
Good afternoon. This is, well, what we did was, we okayed him for a packaged liquor, alcohol. He has, had a little convenience store with the gas station out front, and he served food at the time, but it was more or less to go. So what he has done is, they've taken out the shelving, and it's no longer gonna be a little grocery store, and it's gonna be full-service food. So instead of package, he's applied for drinking on premises. It is zoned for that, and he's met all of his qualifications that he needs to do. So tonight, we're just asking basically to convert his alcohol approval from packaged to on-premise. And I do have him here tonight for questions.
Hello.
This is the buffet at the Shell Station?
Yes, sir.
I have eaten there, it's good.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Could you use your name and address?
Oh, Surmukshank, and my address is 2201 Southwest Railroad Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana 70403, zip code.
Tom, you get that?
My record did, but I get it from Jenny.
Just checking.
I get it from Jenny, I got the address.
You all wear City of Hammond here, we do do a random check for selling alcohol to minors?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number.
Thank you.
You will.
Thank you, thank you.
Number two, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into contract with software and services for tax and occupational license software, $28,060, Marcus McMillan.
Good evening, council. We're gonna replace our current tax software, which is a pretty old system that was actually written in-house a while back. And we're gonna move over to something that will be self-hosted and also that will give us the opportunity to have the support that's needed to be able to do our own printouts, do everything that we need as far as tax and take taxes in and things like that for the city of Hammond. So that's the purpose of us asking for this. Or to use this, should I say?
Is the money, is this budgeted in the?
The money currently is in our sales tax fixed assets, and we already have this money set aside for this project. And the project that we were looking towards to do it with, or whatever the company that we were looking to do it with, this, this company is more beneficial to the city of Hammond than the previous company.
So this was already a budgeted capital project for?
Yes.
I don't have my book, so I can't, I can't look at it, so thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number three, a resolution authorizing a demolition of a property located at 1612 Live Oak Drive, 88% damage, located in Council District 3. The owner is Erica McCray and Adair Holden LLC, 2509 Galeshead Drive, Upper Maryland, Maryland 20774, Bobby Mitchell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
1612 Live Oak, District Number 3, 88% damage, recommending demolition.
First location.
Second.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall. Motion approved. Number four, a resolution authorizing a demolition of a property located at 906 Blackburn Road, 91% damage, located in Council District 4. The owner is St. Trepez ILLC, PO Box 2607, Hammond, Louisiana 70404.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You wanna say it?
Yes, sir, let me, let me.
What would you say, Bobby? I know you worked.
I know you're excited about District 4. Yeah, 906 Blackburn Road, recommendation is to demolish, spoke with the owner, and he's also in favor of demolition.
Motion to approve.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Mr. President, Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
If I could just say, you don't look like you've aged over the last 12 years I've worked with you. I appreciate everything you've done, you always were so responsive, and I just want to tell you it's my pleasure to work with you.
Yes, sir.
It's probably my last time getting to see you at a meeting, so just want to thank you very much.
Awesome.
I feel the same way as well. I appreciate all you've done to help us, especially in District 4.
Thank you.
Great job.
Especially with this, with tonight. Wonderful location. Thank you all for serving, I enjoy working for you all as well.
Can I still use your cell number to call you on things?
Yes, sir, still, still employee of the city, I'm available for what's necessary. Thank you, you'll have a great one.
Bobby, this is Darrell Smith.
Darrell Smith.
He's gonna allow us to demo it.
He's gotta take care of himself, I spoke with him last week.
Number five, a resolution to authorize the mayor, one, to accept a grant for $26,190.25. Number two, to enter into an agreement between the Louisiana Office of Community Development, Disaster Recovery Unit, and the city of Hammond for the FEMA Public Assistant Non-Federal Share Match Program for the March and August 2016 floods. And three, to sign all grant-related documents, Lacy Landry.
These are all related to the floods that happened in March and August of 2016. This is completely unexpected money, but it is a full state grant with no matching requirements. Instead, what this is doing, and it's demonstrated on the very last page of the contract, which is page 32, you gotta flip all the way to the back. We had three eligible projects in the March 2016 storm that the city, the federal government would give us 75%, and the city would pay 25%. Those were emergency response projects, one of them was located just with our city workers and our first responders on that day, on those couple of days. The next was located at the sewer treatment plant, and also with a generator at a lift station. And then the third one was located with some vehicles that needed repair and maintenance after driving through the flooded waters.
They were city vehicles?
They were city vehicles, they were mostly fire trucks that had tried to rescue people from those areas. The other two projects that this applies to are two from the August storm, and it is another emergency protective measures, which is just the first responder activities of those days. And then the second one is vehicles again, and these were police vehicles in the second occurrence. In the second storm, though, the federal government provided a 90% of funds, and we only had a 10% match. So out of the five projects, the city is looking at getting $26,190.25 that will basically take away our match. So it's essentially like the federal government has decided to take on the funds for the entire of those two storms, rather than asking us to match any funds. That's correct. So this was a supplemental appropriation that they did through HUD and through community development block grants. We applied for it, hoping for the best, and it has no strings attached. These are already closed-out projects, they were literally, we just turn in the paperwork, and they will send us a reimbursement check to make it this 100% funded by the federal government.
So will those funds just go back to the general fund?
That is correct.
Or they go back to those funds where those dollars came out of?
They will go back to the general fund because it is in past fiscal years. So they will just go back to the fund balance, they will not go back to an appropriated line item.
Gotcha. So that should just really increase the, ending your fund balance by that $26,000.
That's correct.
As a councilman or councilwoman, then you would know that your fund balance just increased by $26,000, so, you know, those additional dollars that are out there.
That's correct. And we do expect to receive these within this fiscal year. It may take a couple of months, because it always does when you're dealing with grants and reimbursements, but we do expect to receive these before the end of June, so they will be represented for the next budget.
Second.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number six, a resolution to reappoint Hart Bordelawn to the Hammond Economic and Industrial Development District Board for a three-year term from August 1st, 2018, through July 30th, 2021. Mayor Panapinto.
Hart is with Gulf South Bank, he's currently the treasurer of the Economic Development Board, and has done a good job in the request for him to be placed back on the board for an additional three-year term.
Answer, question. I mean, just, just mayor of, you know, line in a sense, we have the new council here as well, some of the new council members. So, the Hammond, the Hammond Economic and Industrial Development Board, what's the status on that board with the, I mean, I thought that there was a property tax or sales tax that didn't pass, and there was some, I guess, at some point, there was a limited number of funds available. What is, what's the status on the Economic Development Board and Heidi Board, I guess?
Let me give you some history on the board itself. The board, when I became a part of the board, I was director of administration with Mason. The board had approximately $700,000 in the kitty, and it was gradually going down, and I was constantly concerned about the board running out of money due to paying expenses and more so paying the, the person who was our director. When the parish started their own economic development, and Stacy Neal moved from our board to their board with the parish, who has since gone to the state, we didn't see the need after the tax that Lamar was talking about where property tax was not assessed, or we didn't get a piece of the tangible tourism's tax to fund our board. We didn't see the need to truly have a director to go out there, because we actually promote the city as well. So now, working with the parish, and also working with Robbie and Tourism and others who are out there promoting, Stacy Neal with the state, what we did was, we, we keep the board, it's separate from the city, but yet.
You're from the parish or from the city?
Both.
The board, okay.
And what we've done is, we go to quarterly meetings now, we retain the board because we do have a piece of ground that's on Pride Drive, that has a spur that comes to the back end of, so we do have the possibility of a good sale of a piece of property that'll bring some more revenue to the board. So it's still an entity in place, but we use the assets around us for promoting land and city and sales and economic development. So that's the status of the board, right now, we currently have a little over $300,000. HIDB, Hammond Industrial Development Board, is separate, that's the board that I'm on, and it has a very small nominal amount of money in that account just to stay afloat, which is a few thousand dollars. The main board, HIEDB, is a board that has the majority of the money. So that's where we stand with the Heidi Board.
So we don't have a direct, there's no director at all?
No, sir, we actually moved the office from the SOU building over here to the office next to Lacy and myself, and we have, that's where Hart comes to sign checks and what have you.
So that piece of property that you're talking about off of Pride Drive, is that the piece that they were talking about opening up a road all the way through to, what is it, University Drive?
No, ma'am.
That's not it?
No, actually, behind, north of the airport is Conrad Anderson Drive, and they're talking about coming in from Conrad Anderson around the neighborhoods by Magazine. And it's probably gonna offset slightly to University Avenue.
Oh, okay. One other question. When we have these appointments, why do they be so late?
Bobby, what do you?
Well, he's being, he's being placed on the board from August, and this is December.
We're doing a house cleaning.
I was just wondering.
These weren't put off while that board was trying to decide what it was doing, whether it was merging with Tangent Economic Development Foundation and like just going away as a board, and also after the elections.
Yeah, because I don't think we've ever been told that you guys, that the board no longer has a director, I guess, I just, this is the first time I've ever heard that.
Well, he's been working with us, he just actually quit working with us, and he's actually part-time with.
He's part-time with TEDF.
Right, with Tangent, so he's still basically part of the family.
Okay. All right, thanks, thanks for the update, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number seven, a resolution to reappoint David.
Fochet.
Fochet, to the Hammond Economic and Industrial Development District Board for a three-year term from August 1st, 2018, through July 30th, 2021.
David is a professor at Southeastern, was on the board, and I requested that we place him on the board, reappoint him for another three years.
Motion to approve.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number eight, a resolution to approve budget change form 19-06 for lift station improvements FY 2018, Chuck Spang.
This is with the budget change form, should be hyperlinked. As you know, we're doing some work on Villa West Lift Station and on Phoenix Square Lift Station, and we pooled some funds from the revolving loan fund and from some other location, or 616 Fund. And when we got ready to process the first pay application, I was informed by accounting that the merging of those funds had not taken place officially. So this is what this is, this is pooling the money, you do see, I don't know if you've read it or not, but one of the, one of the 616 funds I'm asking to transfer into the lift station project that's ongoing is sewer improvements on Club the Luxe Road, which Jason had gotten appropriated right at the end of the fiscal year. And the reason why is because we've used more of those revolving loan funds on sewer work at Pine Hill, and at Whitmar, and at Woodbridge, and then in downtown Hammond. So we kind of went through those DEQ monies, sort of on an emergency basis, I guess you could say. And it's become confusing, because the DEQ money is five years old, four years old. So anyway, this, this puts it all on one, on one project, you know where it's going from, it's not a new appropriation, it's not any new money, we're not getting anything different. So that's our request, if you look at it. Still doing.
He's standing from, no, from Palmetto all the way to.
That's still in the budget, that's not, that's not, the project on Club the Luxe is now being handled by the parish sewer district.
Oh, okay.
So the city's not gonna do the work that was considering being done by the city. So we still have that natural sewer expansion in the budget. Anybody have any questions?
Motion to approve.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
You okay, Councilman Hood?
Yeah, can't get rid of this cough.
We have a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes, we, we would ask for the council members to consider the three resolutions that were sent today regarding the Taxiway C Emergency Drainage and Pavement Repairs Project. There is an email there with, this information was sent out earlier and was placed on the draft agenda, then it was taken off yesterday as we went over some clarifications about the numbers involved and about the sources of funding. And, and they're there for you to consider amending the agenda, because I think we have to do that before we can really discuss.
Motion to amend.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
I asked to add three items, correct? Three, three questions.
Correct. This first item is for a resolution to transfer money from the Grant Match Fund. The council discussed this at the November 13 council meeting, however, there was not a formal resolution that was put forward at that meeting, and there were no numbers attached to it. And so in the issue of trying to be, you know, completely transparent about what numbers we're speaking about, we do have the final numbers on the grant. The grant itself from DOTD Aviation is $61,761. Those are drainage funds that are left over that DOTD Aviation has approved us using for this emergency repair. Remember, this was an emergency repair, and so we didn't have a lot going into it upfront in terms of what the final numbers were gonna be. So the other two items here deal with both a change order and final acceptance. The total amount that would be coming out of Grant Match Fund is $128,954.48. That would cover both what, everything that is needed for the remainder of the project and that change order, should you decide to accept that. So that's the total amount, this would be the end of the project, there would be nothing else coming out. This will still leave about 200, I think it's about, let me correct that, I think it's about 187,000 or so that would still be left in Grant Match Fund for the remainder of the fiscal year. So that still leaves us in good footing for the rest of the fiscal year with about six months to go. We have only spent, I think, about half, maybe, maybe 40% of that fund altogether for the year.
How much have we allocated, though? You know, like, you know, because don't you also, every time we pass something that is pending a match, so when you look at that, you know, I guess it's more than two buckets, it would be pending dollars.
Right.
Not yet, so what's that, what's that dollar?
That's a, that's a good question, and basically, we track that in two different ways. So one way that we do it is we put that in the application, and we consider those pending, you're correct, they're not appropriated yet, because we don't know whether we're gonna get that grant or not. But we do keep track of that, we also keep track of the timeline of when we think that contract will come to the council, which is the second time that you always see those projects, and that's when we actually appropriate the funds.
So how much is in the pending dollars, do you know?
I don't have that number offhand, I'm sorry.
It's gotta be a good thing, maybe on Friday.
That, we, we have, yes.
So they know that pending budget as well.
We do have that ready for the, the council orientation, and the other thing I'll say about that is, we know that for the remainder of this fiscal year, we do not anticipate spending the full 187,000 based on when the grants contracts are due to come in.
And you say that this 29,000 is included in this 128,000?
That is correct. That is, that is why we set that up, so that essentially you would be putting all the money in the right project, and then you would have the opportunity to approve the change order should you need to. And then we wouldn't pass another resolution where you move the money again. So we tried to do it in one, and again, it's up to the council's pleasure as to how they want to handle the next resolutions.
So the resolution on the table now is to transfer 128,954.48 from Grant Match Fund to Taxiway C Emergency Drainage and Pavement Repairs. So that's, that's what you called.
Motion to approve that resolution, I mean, the resolution one on the amended request.
Like, do we vote on it separately?
Yes, ma'am.
This is gonna be separately.
So this is just a transfer of the 128,000 from the grant, 128,954.48 from the Grant Match Fund to the Taxiway C Emergency Drainage and Pavement Repairs, just that one.
The only reason why I was asking, because the way it reads is, we, it looks like this 20, I mean, 29,000 is asking for an increase after we already placed in a.
So should we do that one first?
After we already transferred 128,000, that's what I'm saying, it looks like you asking for another 29,000.
That's true.
After that 128,000 is what I'm saying.
You can.
We can approve number two first, I mean.
Take them. You can take them, we shovel order, you like.
Well, it's, if it's okay with you, Mr. President, I mean, if that makes sense with Councilwoman Beard saying, we could just, I would move that we approve number two, a resolution to approve change order one, and final, final on Taxiway C Emergency Drainage and Pavement Repairs for an increase of 29,338.98.
Good evening. What I have before you.
Don't, don't kill your safe.
Right, you're already winning.
Your soul.
I'm good.
Yeah, they already just voted on that, Jay.
Yeah, yeah, we did the motion.
Councilman Jason Hood.
That works.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard. Councilman Lamar Marshall.
You want to still say what you want to say?
No, I'm good.
We gotta figure that out, yeah.
So now we're going back.
A resolution to approve the transfer of 128,954.48 from Grant Match Fund to Taxiway C Emergency Drainage and Pavement Repairs. forty-eight from Grant Match Fund to Taxiway C Emergency Drainage and Pavement Repairs.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Council Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve, motion to approve final acceptance of Taxiway C Emergency Drainage and Pavement Repairs.
I knew that, that's what I was getting, I was getting ready to tell you, that's what I was talking about. What I have-
You're still winning.
That's right.
Second on the floor.
Bring it over here, let me stand this card.
Certificate of substantial completion, uh, for the subject proj- project, that'd be Taxiway C Emergency Drainage and Pavement Repairs. Uh, the date of substantial completion is today. Uh, the contract is complete with a couple of punch list items that he intends to address, um, prior to the rain on Thursday. So, uh, we recommend approval for the substantial completion for Taxiway C Emergency Drainage and Pavement Repairs.
Motion to approve.
Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard. Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Motion approved. Introduction of an ordinance is set for public hearing. All three introductions will be set for public hearing on December the twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, that is a Wednesday. Number one, introduction of an ordinance to approve rezoning request by Vincent Robeek to rezone Lot four A of the Robeek subdivision located on Tower Drive from IL to CH in accordance with survey by Andrew N. Fowler dated nine-twenty-eight, two thousand and eighteen. Recommended approval by the zoning commission, Tracy Chalacy.
Good afternoon, council. This is, um, in District One, it fronts on Tower Drive, um, and they're asking to downzone actually from, or upzone, it's a more restrictive zoning from IL to commercial.
What's IL again?
Light industrial.
Okay.
Or industrial light.
Yeah, it kinda was, I thought it was light industrial.
Yes, I am sick, for the record.
Motion to introduce.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Council Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved to introduce. Number two, introduction of an ordinance to approve rezoning request by Nicoloso Investments LLC to rezone lots eleven through twelve and lots fourteen through twenty of Westwood Village Phase Two located on Tina Drive from RSL A to RM two in accordance with survey by Robert G. Verlue revised June ninth, two thousand and twelve. Recommended approval by zoning commission.
This property's located in, uh, District Four, it's at the end of Pete Nicolosi Drive. Um, there's, all these lots are vacant lots, and the only thing that's changing is, um, currently you could put mobile homes in this area, the property owner doesn't want mobile homes there, so they want to build, um, duplexes in that area.
Motion to introduce.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Council Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved to introduce. Number three, introduction of an ordinance to approve budget change form nineteen oh-seven to transfer three-hundred-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty dollars from the general fund, one-hundred balance for Zimere Park Pool, project one-one-seven-one-seven, Lacey Landry.
We are asking the council to introduce this item only to have a public hearing at the next meeting. Uh, we have received bids on the pool, they are obviously over budget. Um, this amount would, and would cover all the bid, uh, it would also cover the additive alternate of two additional restrooms, um, at the facility that instead of facing inward to the pool, would face outward and service the skate park and the basketball areas, the other areas of that park. The bids, you know, we couldn't approve and ratify bids tonight or have that discussion tonight because there are not funds available to fund the project. So we are asking to introduce this, to take it to public hearing at the next meeting, that is where you would have public hearing about this item, you would also have, uh, the opportunity to ratify and award the lowest responsive bidder at that time.
So we will be able to do both at the next meeting?
That's correct, and it would, and it would finalize the funding should you choose to do so.
Can we, can we amend the agenda and add that to this introduction that we will also be ratifying the bids, uh, ratifying and awarding the bid at the next meeting?
They would be taken as two separate issues, and the reason that is the case is this is an introduction of an ordinance, and the ordinance is required to move the money since it was not appropriated, so it's-
So ratifying it, it doesn't necessarily have to be, uh, introduced tonight, it's just a function of when we do that on-
Correct. The ratification of the bids would be by resolution, and so that's why we're trying to put those, align those on the same meeting, but give you the opportunity to have that discussion as a whole rather than in separate pieces.
Is it, is the new, um, is the new drawing or whatever rendition available for us to take a view of, or is that something we can see?
Sure, all those, all that full specification package was on the city's website, um, to, you know, had all the minute and detailed drawings there.
The same, um, drawing we had, that had the, with the front and all, that is what's in the bid?
Yes, the, and it has-
With the lanes and the-
Yes, it has eight lanes, it's twenty-five yards, um, it has eight restrooms that face inward towards the pool, it has bleachers on the side, and then it has the, um, I guess we're, for a better phrase, uh, the bump-out area that is more for the leisure, um, or for the exercise classes and that, those kinds of things.
Okay, that's great.
Um, we did end up doing the lanes so that they could use, uh, the, the competitive lanes from one end to the next rather than having the bump-out as a separate portion of that, so the bump-out went to the side.
I saw that. So that, that drawing or rendition, whatever you wanna call it-
Yes.
Is what we're, we will be approving?
Yes, sir. The additive alternate was two additional restrooms, and, and we can have that, we can have whatever items you would like to have in order to have a better public discussion about everything at the next meeting.
All right, motion to introduce. Go ahead, yeah.
Don't shoot me.
I'm sorry.
Neither one of you, I know you worked hard on this, I just wanna point out that this would be in direct conflict with, with, we normally reply, we rely upon from the auditor that we maintain a certain amount in the general fund balance, now we're moving that now. I just wanna point that out.
You are correct.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard. Council Lamar Marshall.
Aye.[1780.06]